Hey, there are currently eight calls on Polycom right now around County. The system's just maxed out. No, I mean, I've got the option to terminate calls, but you know, I don't know if they're actually... Well, I don't... No, that's what I'm trying to say, there's no way to tell. I can terminate it, but they could be right in the middle of a, you know, call session. Yeah, that's, I don't want to just go willy-dilly and come and... Let's see, there's a, there's one open right now, courtroom 409, hearing room 425. Right there on that floor. I don't know if, I think 409 is Wilson and 425 is referee Stone. You ready? Yep. Alright. You can do, Frank, unless you kick somebody off. Yeah?
Mic check?
I heard you.
Thank you.
Hmm. Everybody about ready?
Yep.
Wait till my computer clock hits ten and we'll start. Alright, it's ten o'clock. We'll call the January eleventh. Twenty-one. General Government Meeting order. First up, we'll approve, I need approval of the agenda. Motion by Walls. Second by Snell. Motion approved. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Give the sign. Thank you, Board. Next up, we have public comment. Is there any public comment out there, Michelle?
There's no public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Without any public comment, we'll move on to meeting item five, which is the minutes. I read the minutes, I need a motion in support to approve the minutes. If there's no changes, motion by Snell. Seconded by Walls. Thank you. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Give the sign. Passes. Next up, item B is appointments. We have one appointment today only. Ebby for the Blackman Township LDFA County Representative. Term is indefinite. The current member is David Elwell. David Elwell is the only applicant. Is there any nominations from the floor?
I, I move to reappoint David Elwell.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint David Elwell. I'll second that. All in favor of David Elwell going to the full board? Indicate this, giving the aye sign. Thank you. Passes unanimously. Next up is item C, would be the Grand River, Upper Grand River Watershed Alliance Annual Report for 2020. Hello, who's giving this report here? Mr. Renshler?
Hi, this is Paul Renshler. Thank you. Thank you for having us this morning. You have our written reports and just a couple overview items. We've been working mostly to update the county, city, and Blackman and Leonie Townships stormwater permits this past fall and on into the winter. That application was submitted to MDEQ, now Eagle, back in 2017. They responded back in 2020, asking us for some revisions. So those are the things we're trying to do now to strengthen the stormwater permit for the county and fill some of the gaps that Eagle has identified. The other highlights, I suppose, come from implementation of the Upper Grand River Water Trail. And I'm proud of our partnership with Parks Department the last year or so, working on grant applications. The department has now received funding for a new launch at Vanderkook County Park, which Kyle might talk about, and then also got an approval for purchase of new land at the confluence of the Grand and the Portage Rivers. And any questions you might have, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, Board? One more call, any questions? Steve, go ahead.
Bill, yeah. Hey, Paul?
Yeah.
I work with Trout Unlimited in Washtenaw County on the mill run.
Okay.
And they're able to cut back more bank material when it gets in the river than what we can. Have we ever considered talking to their DNR representative about the possibility of us being able to, since the blue water now is a trail, being able to cut more back and push it under the bank? Because you, what, what they do is they end up stacking it in the waterway, pointing down river and then making the waterway wider. Have we happened to discuss that with, with them at all?
We have had some discussion and actually the Drain Office has had contractors working on removing some of the log jams this last year and the year prior. We've had them out twice now to remove some large jams. They have stacked the wood up on the shore. We've talked about whether we want to anchor it adjacent to the shoreline as well. Basically, our, our approach is to leave the, the roots intact, but take out the overhanging branches that are, or trees that are collecting more. I did talk recently with Kenny Price about some clearing that might be done along the fairgrounds and to open that up for views. I don't know that we would find a different response. I don't know that we would find a different response there, we just haven't really focused on that much.
You know, I've been in discussions with Mr. Price, I'm putting together a crew for the fairgrounds area, and are the rules differently for invasive material versus natural material?
The rules are not different in terms of whether you can uproot plants or not, but certainly it's. A greater recommendation to remove invasives. You would need some herbicide treatment as well, probably, to keep that material from coming back.
And I assume there's an approval, approved list of different herbicides that we could use that close to a waterway?
Yes, a permit might be required, or in all likelihood would be required, adjacent to the waterway. But each species has kind of its own herbicide it's most susceptible to, yes.
Okay, with all the work we're gonna be doing from pretty much North Street, north of the county line, involving Blackman Township and that type of stuff, do you think it's an ID, a wise idea for us to look at that possibility? What it would take for a permit, and if we could get a seasonal permit that could be managed by the Drain Office or something like that, so we could actually get in there? And who knows, maybe even some Eagle projects or Boy Scout groups could get in there and help us begin to maintain some of this blue water trail.
Yeah, what, what Kenny and I talked about, we're identifying some places where we want key visual access or, or physical access to the river and focusing there. You really want to keep most of those roots intact to hold the stream banks in place and stop erosion, or prevent erosion, but. Yeah, places where people are going to sit or want to view the river, we should look at those and, and implement a plan, that's right.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Mr. Rentschler? Thank you, Paul, appreciate your report, see you again next year, I guess.
All right, take care.
Take care. Okay, moving on to the next item, the Jackson County Finance, welcome Cecilia.
Good morning, um, so yeah, I am here to report on November. As you can see from our benchmarks, our November came very favorable with our benchmarks, our benchmark at November is ninety-one point seven. Our expenditures came in at November at eighty-seven point seven, and our revenues are at ninety-two point nine. So November looks fantastic with what we were expecting. So I'm just curious if there was any questions that I can help answer or research for you for November.
Questions, Board? Anybody got a question? Thank you, Cecilia, appreciate your report.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Facilities, item E. Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning, Rick. In front of you, we have a request to extend the security services contract for the courthouse and the North Lawn Building. From Securitas in Lansing, our current provider. In the amount of a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. The reason we're requesting this contract extension is due to the fact that the landscape keeps changing of what our security folks need to do at these buildings. This is all based on the State Court Administrator's Office that is calling the shots on what needs to be done. I, myself and. Deputy Administrator Burns and Director Anderson discussed this. And we really believe. It was better to just extend this contract and then take it out to bid again later in twenty-twenty-one. It's the same amount that we have budgeted currently, that's the same amount we had budgeted the year before that, so. That's why we're requesting this.
Okay, it was, I read here that. Armor Knight was the lowest bidder. But they canceled our contract, uh, five years ago?
They did.
Okay, were they the lowest bidder this time?
We didn't take it out to bid, Phil.
That's correct, I remember you saying that now. Okay, the one eighty-one, is that? The same price as last year, you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions, Board? If not, I need a motion and support to send this to the full board.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one quick question?
Absolutely, Mr. Kennedy, go ahead.
Just a brief question, if we've ever considered Sheriff's Department doing it? With the. Amount we're paying, it costs us more to do it with the Sheriff's Department. And I'm saying this because I know in the future, we're gonna be facing sheriff's budget issue. So if we put funding that we're paying out to an outside service into our own department. Help with that issue, has that ever been looked into?
Well, Corey, I can say, yes, it has. The former sheriff had no problem providing security services at the courthouse, but adamantly refused to, to provide services for the North Lawn Building. And as opposed to having two. Separate security forces in place, we just went with a private contractor. I will say this for our new sheriff, he. Has seen both sides of the coin, if you will, at the courthouse, both as a police officer and also from a working attorney, so. One of the really nice things of the. Courthouse Security Committee is the sheriff is a part of that. And I really look forward to his input on what we can do better there, and maybe he would. Like to move forward with. Managing the security there. But again, that's all I know, and I just have to cover things. As they're currently in place.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Rick, I have a question.
Sure.
Is there anybody for these, who do these guys report to, they report to their corporation out of Lansing? Or who is their contact person at the court?
At the courthouse, it's Jeremy Burns, and at the North Lawn Building. It's, um. Suzie.
Okay, they have somebody to report to.
Yes.
Would it, I, I don't know the, the. Liabilities here that the county would be up, involved with and all, but maybe it's too simplistic of an idea. Could we hire our own people from the ranks of the sheriff retirees? And as casual employees and. Perform this job?
We certainly could, it would just, with that direction, we could certainly move forward. I, I think though. And again, this is just me talking, my own opinion.
That's what I want.
I would use. I, my preference would be to have the Sheriff's Department run the security operations. And use the security positions as a farm club, if you will, to fill their ranks of the corrections staff or road patrol. This would be a great way to get folks into. Into view, if you will, with the. The Sheriff's Department. So, again, that's just my thoughts, this is based on what we did at the City Police Department with the cadet program. We had folks who wanted to be police officers, they went through cadet training, which actually included the current sheriff and undersheriff, where you had to work the front desk. You had to dispatch, it really helped to fill the ranks when there was a vacancy.
Okay. What's your thoughts, Board, on something like that, or should we stay with a known product? Commissioner Pulaski? I guess he's just talking. Administrator Overton?
Yes.
Is this a possibility we could check into, or?
Well, yeah.
Pour a shot down, or what?
Uh, there's plenty of things we can check into, the, the more appropriate, if the Board is not comfortable, is to refer this back to the Sheriff's Department, ask them to take a look at it, and along with Rick, the alternatives, and present more alternatives. But we don't want to make decisions on the fly about what we will or will not do without proposals. And understand the cost and ramifications.
Understand, I mean, one way we take on legacy costs, the other way we take out a profit we have to pay. So it may, may be a moot point.
So at this time, given that, you know, we have need for this contract and. And it's a one-year contract, I would recommend you renew this one year, and then you have a whole year to evaluate, give the time, give the sheriff some time to get his legs under him and all, and, and give you some options.
Sounds like a plan. Commissioner Pulaski, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I would move the contract extension be recommended to the full board.
Moved by Pulaski, seconded by Mahoney. All in favor, indicate by saying aye, given the sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Board. We will move on to the next topic. Next up is Parks.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you today, Kyle?
Great, how are you, thank you.
Thank you.
So you have before you a joint resolution to support studying the trail from Brooklyn to Manchester. So the portion of, in Jackson County is from Brooklyn to Watkins Lake State Park. So there's lots of, lots of partners funding this study, basically, and we would be contributing five thousand towards the overall cost of fifty to sixty thousand. So this is being championed by the Irish Hills Legacy Committee. This trail is, it's identified as a priority route in most recent on motorized plan. This is something that was approved at the December Park Board meeting, just bring it here for the next level of approval.
Okay, Kyle, any questions, Board? Tony Blair, there.
Well, I guess I'm in agreement, we need some kind of trail, there's obviously public support for it, but. The route of this trail. I have many questions on, you've got twelve private owners, privately owned property along here, that you have to get an easement, so. My first question would be, would these be a permanent easement, or if somebody granted an easement and then found that the. The trail through their property was. Was a nuisance or a danger to them, could they then retract their easement?
I don't believe so, I don't, I mean, this isn't that far along, this is just kind of studying what's, what's conceptual at this point.
So once they gave the easement, it would be forever, they'd never be able to. Correct it if they chose.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay, when you go interview these owners, asking them to. Agree to the easement, do you properly inform them that this is forever and they will never be able to change it?
Yeah, and this is something that, you know, Region Two will be putting on RFP, and this isn't something that, that we would be taking on, we're just one of the many, many, many partners. But yeah, I think that that's typically something that's. Explained along the process.
All right, my second question is, you're going through the Brooklyn Sportsman's Club. You're gonna need some fencing to keep the trail, the trail users out of the rest of the Sportsman's Club. I hope Brooklyn Sportsman's Club know that they're opening themselves up to. Possibility of being shut down. Once you got people hiking that trail through the Sportsman's Club and they hear the gunfire. People with a, with one political affiliation are gonna be filing suit to get that range closed. I've worked with many public. Private police department rangers. And I've seen where the public has shut down police firearms training facilities. Because they're, they're so anti-gun, so I would be very surprised if Brooklyn granted you this. My other concern is the. The trail goes past a clothing optional resort. You want families with little kids hiking this trail past a nudist colony?
I think these are all things that'll be looked at in the study, basically, this is all conceptual, and once it gets to design, I'm sure there'll be certain considerations for, for things like that.
All right, my fear is that once these studies get done, and somebody pushes a plan after the study. Thing just steamrolls, there's no way anybody can stop it, even for very valid reasons. So I have reservations to this particular route. You stated here that you have an alternative route along the roadway instead of through people's property. I guess I would like to look at. Other options, past the gun range and past the nudist colony as well. That's just my input.
Thank you, Tony, a couple. Valid points there. Commissioner Pulaski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I've got a motion to make, and then I would ask for the chance to make a comment. I will move that we approve the expenditure five thousand to participate in the study.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have any support?
I'll support that.
Smarter by Mr. Snell. Motion by Mr. Pulaski. Okay, uh, you wanted to further comment, Mr. Pulaski?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the comments that Commissioner Bear has made are certainly valid, there are always questions with trails like this. But that's why we conduct the study, to identify those issues that may arise, and to come up with the best plan in the future. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. I can speak, I know the clothing optional facility has new ownership. When was the. Permission granted, do you know, Kyle?
No, I think this, this is basically a conceptual route that came from, from public.
Okay. Okay, being conceptual, we're not final approval, we're in approval law. I guess we'll go to a vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye, or give the sign. Two, three. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Is that your only business today?
Yes, it is, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll move on to item five G, Administrator Controller, we'll be discussing policy forty seventy. Is this Deb?
Yep, um, thank you very much, we just had, after double checking, we apologized, we neglected to assign emergency management to a committee, due to the recent transition from the sheriff to the Administrator's Office, we needed to assign them to a committee to report. And then we also spoke with a clerk, and she indicated that she updates on public elections, so we didn't need to have public elections reporting to a committee. So we just had two minor changes, we apologize that we neglected to notice those last month.
Okay, these are just policy changes, and we need to take action on the committee today?
Correct.
Okay, we should post that for next month?
It should go, if, if passes committee, it should go to the full board.
Okay. Do we have nominees for that?
It's just an update to the policy.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Yep, Commissioner Pulaski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move the recommendation of the policy to the full board, and then I have a minor comment to make. Once I get support.
Okay, we got a support, is that a support, Daniel?
Yep.
Motion by Pulaski, supported by Mahoney. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pulaski. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pulaski.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I know it's not part of the editing of this policy, but I note. In one part of the policy where we require the vice chair to be a chair of a committee. I don't know why we do that, because it seems to me it limits the opportunity of the chair to assign whoever he or she might want to a chairmanship. Um, but I simply draw the attention of Commissioners to that provision of this policy. It's a little strange to me, but, uh, nevertheless, I'm prepared to support the policy as drafted. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Chair Shawwell.
The reason for the creation of that rule was the fact that we have nine Commissioners, and in order to do the mathematics to put two Commissioners on every committee, the vice chairman needed to serve as, on a committee. So with that in mind, the vice chairmanship was given the power of one committee chairmanship. That was just what, how it occurred.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, we need to, uh. Send this on to the full board, uh, we had a motion and support, correct? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye, show the sign. Passes unanimously, thank you, Board. Okay, that's it for committee items today, we'll move on to other business, uh, either motion to support to pay the claims. You have a motion, Mr. Walz? Mr. Snell does the support, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Give the sign. Passes, thank you, Board. Uh, other minutes, you can read those, uh, reporting schedule. For next month, we have the Enterprise Group and the Chamber of Commerce. Now, move on to public comments, is there any public comment out there?
Uh, no public comment.
Thank you, sir. A committee member comment. Commissioner Mahoney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just, uh, one quick comment really, uh, toward, um, administration and slash question, um, in regards to, um, the, uh, paying the claims, I'm, I'm just curious if, you know, with. With it being a little more difficult for us to get by, um, the office, at least I know for myself, I don't know about anybody else, but for myself, it would be convenient if we could figure out a way to share those if, by email, or. I know we don't want to upload them in the board docs, but if we could share those some way by email to be reviewed, um, a little easier, a little more convenient, um, it would be much appreciated.
Okay, and, uh, the task for the chair or Mr. Overton? See if we can come up with some kind of policy to, temporary policy to get those things signed. Mr. Overton?
Oh, well, I would just say that, uh, that's, that's not a problem, we can share them to, to review, uh, we have, uh, had the appropriate number of signatures every month for them. Uh, yeah, I understand not everybody's made it in, but, um, but we do have enough signatures to make them, uh, uh, pass the muster for the audits and things like that, of course, but, uh, sure, I'm sure we can work something out to make it so they're more visible for Commissioners.
How many do we, are required, like?
None.
Free? Okay.
None.
All right, any other committee comment? There are none, Commissioner Pulaski, was that a comment? Yeah, your hand raised, okay, okay, I then have no other comments, uh, meetings adjourned, thank you.